Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Equalization Meeting for Thursday, August 7th, 2025. I am Commissioner and Chair of the Board, Rick Vest. To my left is Commissioner and Vice Chair Kristi Yocum. To her left, Commissioner Matt Schulthe. To my right are Commissioners Sean Flaherty and Chelsea Johnson. We want to do the plan. Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Reading options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, July 15th, 2025?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthe?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I move approval of the additions and deductions.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthe?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is the Assessor Inspection and Review Report of Damaged Real Property Form 425A.
Good morning. Brian Grimm with Lancaster County Assessor Register of Deeds. The Form 425A for parcel number seventeen dash thirty dash one thirty-three dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero. Form 425A was filed timely. Everything was statutory obligations have been fulfilled. We did an inspection of the property. There the building was completely demolished. It was a fire. We had no issues there at all. It's kind of a two-part process. We had already removed the value for tax year 2025. It got put on the agenda. We felt that it was a statutory obligation where it had been filed to put it on the agenda, but the valuation has already been corrected for tax year 2025.
So the eight hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred then will be removed from the assessor's?
That's the land-only value.
That's the land.
Correct. The improvement value was removed for tax year 2025. It was caught early enough in the year. I think it was January when we went out and did the first inspection on it, and we removed the value at that time.
Okay.
So this is a procedural nicety, but we are the landowner's going to pay the land-only value?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Very good. Just to make sure, does anyone here want to speak on this issue? Any member of the public want to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move that we accept the Assessor Inspection and Review Report of Damaged Real Property Form 425A.
Second.
Motion second to accept and approve. Please call the roll.
Schulthe?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us item four, a report of destroyed real property Form 425 from Bryce Sayers.
And this is the same exact thing. It's just a dismissal of the first one where it has already been taken care of from the previous year for tax year 2025 and the removal of that valuation of the improvement itself for the land only. So it's kind of a continuation of the previous item on the agenda.
I would move we accept and approve the report of destroyed real property.
Second.
Motion second to approve item four. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthe?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to item five, the Property Evaluation Protest Form 422 Dismissals.
Morning, sir.
Morning. I'm Roger Bumgarner. I filed 422s on forty-two properties, all empty lots in Lincoln. I filed it on six twenty-six electronically through a link. They emailed me six thirty, June 30th, and said they don't click on links. Understandable. So I sent them all in again on June 30th without a signature on them. They made me aware on July 1st. I resent them in July 1st with signatures, and then they claimed they were invalid. So I understand that, but I'm just asking for forgiveness or whatever. Forgiveness.
So just making sure I'm clear, Roger. The forms were submitted on the 30th with the appropriate mechanism that the assessors were requesting.
Yes.
Missing a signature. You were notified July 1st, and you responded on July 1st with your signature?
Correct.
Okay. And so then we, let's ask Andrew here. Is this a case where we have authority to take action? Because we run into that.
Under Nebraska state law, no.
I hate about these meetings.
Could you expound upon that? Just the law says that the 30th is absolute deadline, and we can't?
Yeah, so Nebraska state law requires that the applications be submitted according to form on July thirty, or sorry, on June 30th, and that's the statutory deadline, and the BOE does not have statutory authority to correct that date. And so we would be, what you would be asking me is to essentially allow you guys to overrule the unit camera's decision.
We would like that.
Don't threaten me with a good time.
I'm okay with that, too.
Come on now.
Well, that would create a situation to where the assessor's office would be appealing that to Turk, and then, yeah, so.
The problem, sir, is, you know, we are the BOE, but we are guided by state statutes that define our authority and our ability to make decisions. I think that operating with tight deadlines, I get it. On July 1st, a prompt response elicits some appreciation on my part, but I don't believe we have any authority.
Did you have signatures on what you sent in on the 26th?
No. On the link, no.
Okay.
Nor July 30th, but yes, July, nor June 30th, but yes, July 1st.
Right, 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 right.
So.
Commissioners, any other comments?
No, I just know that the staff does their best to notify people when there is something missing, and they had hundreds of these, so.
Yeah, no issue with anybody, just asking for.
Wish we could. I get it, you're being reasonable. The law doesn't give us a lot of leeway on this one. If we did approve it, then the assessor's office would appeal to Turk, most likely.
I mean, I can't speak on behalf of them, but you know, that is a possible scenario.
Well, they have their legal responsibilities, too. So it all gets done at the legislature. So unless there's something else, sir, I'm afraid we have to say we can't approve your request, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's the whole story. So, all right, thanks anyway.
Can I ask one clarifying question? I'm not sure who to ask. Some of these say not filed on 422. What does that mean? Did they use the wrong form? Did they?
That's gonna be, there we go.
By state statute, they're required to file a 422 as of the 2022 change in the statute. So oftentimes, they'll just, it used to be we would accept a letter if somebody filed a letter, but now it has to be on that 422 form.
Gotcha.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on property evaluation protest Form 422? Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vest, Cody Gertus with the Great Plains Appraisal that coordinates the entire process. During the 422, anything that's in this, in this list, we actually don't hear them during the summer. So even if you were to do something today, we would not have heard them. We just don't even, I don't even know if we have access to them, to be honest with you. They don't show up on our list, so we kind of know that they're there, but we don't actually hear them. So if you were to try to do something today, we wouldn't have a value for you, so.
Very good. Thank you, Cody. Appreciate that. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Yeah, we filed a.
We'll need your name, sir.
Flaramanion. I'm Chairman of the Board of the Meeting Place at Twenty-Eighth NS, and we just purchased 441 North 28th, and we filed for property tax exemption, and I was told to be here, and somebody might have a question.
Okay, we're gonna need a little more information.
You were approved, though, right? Excuse me? You were approved? I don't know that.
Jacob?
You're on a different item.
I was gonna say it's later on in the meeting.
Got it.
Yeah. This may not be the right time.
It's later on in the meeting.
Okay.
So it's when we discuss.
Jacob will make sure we call attention to your situation.
The public hearing. Item eight.
Okay.
Yep, item eight, yes, sir.
I'm seeing.
Got it.
Yeah. Mr. Clerk, I'm not seeing anyone else coming forward, so we'll move on.
I think it's take action, Mr. Chair.
Oh, we still need to take action. Gotcha. Commissioners?
Yeah, we, I move to accept this report and approve these dismissals.
Second.
Motion second to approve item five. Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulthe?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item six, final action on real property valuation protest for 2025.
Again, Cody Gertus with Great Plains Appraisal Acton is one of the coordinators for the process. My partner, Jason Pickrell, is here with me, and also Lori Johnson was representing us as a coordinator, so. Do appreciate the board having us back again. We've been here quite a few years and appreciate you. As we work through this, this was a reval year, and so the assessor touched or reevaluated, looked at every property type, every parcel, every property in the county. With those come usually, with anything, there's always tweaks, there's always adjustments, there's always changes of the market, changing of the systems. They review different things at different times, but when they're going through, there's always changes. And so there's always a push and pull there, there's something different. So we saw quite a few changes in properties. Some were up, some were down, some kind of stayed the same. Some were hit a little bit harder, some are just getting closer to market. And so as we see those, we ended up going through, I believe there were thirty-four, fifty-five total, when you take off the one twenty-four, I think on that Form 422, it was about thirty-three, thirty-one that we heard this year. So it was a, it was a pretty big year. It was about double what we did last year, a little less than the year before, but it was a pretty big year this summer, crammed into a pretty tight space, as always. There was about eleven percent ag, fourteen percent of it was commercial, seventy-six was residential. Electronic and paper is interesting. It's still about fifty-fifty, maybe just a touch over fifty percent on electronic. So even though that's out there, it's, there's still a lot that's paper. And I know the clerk takes it and turns it into electronic, so I know some of the staff is here, they spend a lot of time working on getting it electronic and walking through it through it with people. I think we had about seven or eight hundred that were waived hearings, and so they protest, but just don't have a hearing. We just get the information, so we do those on our own. And then we talked earlier this morning, is it about twenty percent, twenty, twenty-five percent that was in person? Does that seem right, or is that a little heavy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had, it felt like it was a pretty busy few days this year in person. Like always, or like we've done in the past, the clerk's office guides them to electronic and so that we can do it that way easily and do it over the phone. But there are, in person, we do offer that, so we do see quite a few people there. I don't know that there's any really huge changes or any big properties. I know in the past, we've had some properties that we've talked about here that were, you know, a difference overall, or some global issue that was affected or changed. I didn't really see anything there. They touched everything, so. As always, it becomes more educational than anything. I think that a lot of people just really need to understand. We try to do that. We try to educate our referees as best we can with help from the clerk's office on the system and the assessor's office. So we spend almost all summer on the phone with all parties involved. So we really appreciate the help with clerk's office. The system continues to work well. I really like the electronic. It gives us more time to spend on the actual protest rather than just doing paperwork and signing my name or putting my name or the same address on the same pieces of paper ten times. So that has really helped out. We didn't really make many adjustments this year. It really didn't need it. So as we continue to go, there's always stuff that we work on. Almost immediately after this, we start talking to IT about a few of those issues and try to make it better, make it an easier system. The, when we're with property owners, we are, we are trying to explain it to them. The last several years, we have had it where the assessor, if we, as a referee, deemed it necessary, they'll go out and look at stuff, look at properties. They relist quite a few properties. What did we say? I think a hundred and, a hundred and forty-some? That we went out to a hundred and forty properties again, we meaning the assessor's office, and then they give us a new number. And so it's nice that they can adjust the system. A lot of times, we're seeing properties that we don't get into, or they haven't been into for years, and so it makes the system better. The better you make the system internally, the better the output is. And so we, almost every year, have fifty to a hundred and fifty of those that are new, and so that helps the process, so. It was another fairly easy year, all things considered. It went smooth. I think we got it done. I know we were talking outside that they could, we could see the clerk's office watching us as soon as we put it in, somebody emailed and said, are you gonna push? Push the number. So we got them all done in a timely manner, I hope, so. I don't know if you guys have any questions, but we didn't really have any issues with numbers.
I have several, Cody. What percentage would, if you know, what percentage did you reevaluate due to the appeal brought?
I don't know the percentage number, and I ever, actually don't really track the number, but I did hear the number this year. I think about seven hundred of the three thirty-one did change. Some went up, some went, most of them went down. My answer normally to that is I change a hundred percent of them where it's proven to be wrong, and they have the data. And so it may be a misnomer that seven hundred is, maybe feels like a small number or a big number, but this year, seven hundred of thirty-three hundred did change.
Okay.
Twenty percent.
Yeah. I received a letter this week, and I'm not gonna go into the details per se, but the gist of the letter, and I'll follow up for those who wrote me the letter, if you're in the room, but the gist of it is this couple owns three parcels of ag land, and they saw dramatic increases. And this may not be your question, Cody, it may be the assessor's office. Their values were increased by forty-seven, sixty-six, and eleven point seven on three different parcels. One of the questions they asked was, is the increase in ag land due to a few specific sales? Because there were, they pointed out the Google sale and the jail, the proposed state penitentiary purchase of land that were really outside market values in the normal sense. So the question is, ag valuations went up significantly? And if that's not your question, then I'll ask someone from the.
It probably is an assessor question, but understanding overall what they are, they did reevaluate ag, and they're, again, I'm getting over my skis here on exactly what I should say, but, or do know, but the values still have to be approved by the, by the state. I believe they were really close to a hundred percent, if not ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of market value, ag land. My understanding is that they use sales that are not influenced by the city as best as they can. So I don't know if it's a one or two, three mile range from Lincoln, Lancaster County. As you can imagine, the values that are on the edge of town are, can be quite large, that are not representative of ag value. So my understanding is that they are using sales from other counties, more rural nature, probably not catching Sarpy and Cass or most of Lancaster County, so it would be Gage, maybe Saline. I don't know if they go into Odo and Neemahal, but trying to catch those sales that are more ag-based with the highest and best use for that. And so is the penitentiary sale or a Google sale or any of these sales that are ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty thousand, sixty thousand acre included? The easy answer would be no. It's not just simply that. That market has been increasing for several years at, in larger and larger rates, until really beginning of this year. That ag market has still been increasing, so. Are those ag values based on that? No. Are they based on new sales of ag values? Yes.
Okay. Appreciate that.
And it's not just one or two sales either. I'm sure they have a large database of sales that they use for the revow.
And I'm gonna ask, Brian, who from your department would be best equipped to follow up on Cody's answer there? Please come up, then I want to follow up with that, because I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here, but just get the best information available.
We were, I mean, Lancaster County was the highest increased, increase in ag land prop values by a long ways in the state of Nebraska, so it's a very valid question.
So I have kind of a double question then, Brian, and I think Cody gave us an answer on the first half. Is your appraisal of ag properties influenced by these out-of-character land sales, i.e. like the penitentiary?
We do not use one ag sale within Lancaster County to value our properties. We and Sarpy County and Douglas County are considered influenced counties. The Department of Revenue sends us the sales to utilize to value our properties for agricultural purposes. We used, I think it was sixty-six, if I remember right, sales from Odo, Johnson, Saline. It's basically our surrounding counties are the sales that we utilize. I would say we had some pretty healthy increases. I looked backwards to see when we had, if we had incremental increases. Our system would only track back to 2017, and in 2018, the ag values went down in our system for some reason. They'd never been changed. I can't answer why they had never been changed since that time period, but we gave them a small increase last year just trying to catch up, and it wasn't enough. We had to, to be, fulfill our statutory obligations, they got a very healthy increase this year on dry. We reclassified a little bit of the other lands. Some of them actually went down a little bit, and some of them did go up. But statutorily, we are where we need to be from a valuation standpoint.
Would you anticipate another significant increase next year?
Depends on the sales. If the sales go up.
The reason I'm asking that is you said last year was an attempt to catch up, so I'm trying to figure out, would you say you're, we are now caught up?
At this point, yes.
Okay.
It all depends on the sales moving forward. From what I can see, the sales moving forward are slightly down, a little bit, not a huge portion, but we still have to work backwards three years. So if the sales prices are going down this year, we still have two years previous that we have to utilize to establish the values for the current year that we're working in.
It just, I think it caught folks off guard, Brian, is, and all of us kind of shudder at unexpected surprises, especially the ones that are not beneficial to us. And so when you see these large increases, it does cause a lot of concern. But what I'm hearing, so that I can give a credible answer, is when you value ag property, you don't use any sales inside Lancaster County?
No.
All sales in, and not Douglas and not Sarpy as well.
Correct.
They would be in other counties that are much more rural.
It's counties that are non-influenced, that they're, by non-influenced, I mean, you have, for lack of better terms, farmer A selling to farmer B as opposed to farmer A selling to developer A, because those are gonna be two different sales prices.
Very good. Well said. Okay, so I think that gets me where I need to go, yeah.
I had a couple of questions from some people in the public, too. I think you might be a better pro, I'm not sure. When somebody, my understanding is that when somebody buys a house or a piece of property, that whatever the sales price is, should be their valuation for two years. Is that correct?
No.
Okay. So help me understand, when it would be their valuation?
Every year stands on its own.
So when would it, it would only be the value for that year?
Correct. Because every year, statutorily, is different than the previous year. So if we would have a really strong market of, just say, I'll throw out a number, twenty percent increase, generally speaking, you could never have that property at that sales price if it's went up exponentially by, you know, that fifteen, twenty percent. So every year stands on its own, and then they, we have to look at the ratios every year to see what need, what properties need to be revisited.
I guess maybe where the two-year thing comes is it maybe depends what time of year, does it matter what time of year a sale happens? You know, if you buy it at the end of the year, then the valuations are, that valuation is still only twelve months old when you're revaluing for the next year?
Or tax year 2025. Now, statutorily, we're obligated to value with a certain time range, so it's a two-year time range that will take valid sales to build our models, and that's what, how we're judged as far as our valuations are on. For residential, a two-year period. Commercial and agriculture, it's three years.
Okay. So then, the other thing that I've got a couple of emails about specifically was, my valuation came out this, I have an appraisal that was just done. I gave it to the assessor, the assessor doesn't match the appraised value. It's a, it's a appraised value from the last few months. You guys don't adjust it. They give the appraised value to you guys, you guys still don't adjust it. So why is an appraisal not an okay way to value?
Would you like me to answer that one?
We probably both have answers, I would just say.
My answer is it's a difference of opinion. An appraisal is a valuation. It's someone's opinion of value. And I think that's a simple answer. And opinions can always vary.
In terms of the protest process, we're always looking at everything as of January one of twenty, twenty-five, twenty-four, whatever year it may be. We always reconcile the appraisal with the property record card. So it could be that someone bought a house in June of twenty-four and then made renovations to the house after that. They fixed it up, or they did something, they pulled a building permit. So while we do look at appraisal, and we do understand that they are an integral part, and we do that as our day jobs as well, it may be, and a lot of times, they are changing. There's something different in the property. And so while it feels like it should be just a rubber stain. And so while it feels like it should be just a rubber stamp, it's an appraisal, we always have to make sure that what is there is what the county is valuing. And we do see significant times where that changes. Somebody buys a house, uh, especially in these last several years when it's been so expensive to build a new house, you'll find a house in a neighborhood that's twenty, thirty years old, they'll buy it in the beginning of the year, which would be then eight months maybe from the assessment, the new assessment year, go in, renovate it, and then that has now changed. And so while there is a sale price and an appraisal, and they may line up, they may not line up, we're always reconciling those two. And, and there are times that, there are times that we feel like the appraisal isn't, isn't good evidence for one reason or another, but we're always reviewing every single one. I would say, if you bought a house and it was actively marketed and it met the definition of market value, that would be another reason why a market value, or a sale may not, may not be valid. If you buy a property from your uncle or brother, sister, it wasn't marketed, it was a foreclosure, there's all sorts of reasons why those sales aren't valid sales. I talked to somebody from the assessor's office today, they were just going out to verify sales. And so they're always trying to understand exactly what happened, that line in the sand when there's a sale. And it may be that the sale wasn't a good sale, it wasn't a valid sale for any number of reasons. And so that's why, if you see a sale and it says invalid, or I, I don't know the terminology they use right now, I think it's a good sale or disqualified sale. It may be that that sale is disqualified for any number of reasons, and that wa- that's why it won't be on, if it was your house, it wouldn't be on your assessment and your comp sheet.
This particular person that contacted me had a va- or uh, appraisal from Great Plains, and then it went through the process, was way, valued way higher than Great Plains, and they brought the Great Plains back to you guys as the, as the referee, and it still didn't hold. And so it just, like, that is so frustrating for the public, when they, they have hired a professional opinion to get the valuation of a house. You're saying it's an opinion, I hear it's an opinion, but it's also a professional opinion. It's not just, it's not just me saying, I think my house is worth, worth that much. It's so frustrating to our, to the public when they have a professional opinion on the valuation of a piece of property, and you guys don't recognize that.
Well, we will look at things too, it's, it could be a range. Maybe it's at the low end of a range, I mean, if you have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar sale, could it sell for two-ninety, or could it sell for three-ten? Yeah, it could sell for any of those, anywhere in between that, they're typically gonna have a range that they will sell in. Uh, we have to look at what we do for mass appraisal, it's, it's a model. We will look at the appraisals and say, is it, is it close, is it viable, is it something that would meet all the criteria, um, or is it something where there's, i- if an appraisal comes back and it's got comps that are three miles away from the subject, it might not be what we would call credible. Uh, so we have to look at all these options when we look at them.
Sale and appraisal are also a line in the sand as of a certain date. And so one of the biggest things we always hear is nothing, I didn't do anything different to my house. Well, it's the market that's changing, not necessarily the house. So in that case, there, eh, part of our appraisal correlation report is, how old is the appraisal? And has the market changed since then? And so one of the things that we do is, we might adjust that sale forward to January one of twenty-twenty-five due to the market. And we saw increases this last year and for the last several years on houses. And so we st- we're adjusting those as well. We can a- address any, any issues you might have, or if, a lot of times it's just a clarification issue, honestly. Uh, because obviously we see our own reports through there, so.
Very good.
There are a thousand different reasons why a number in a report isn't also what is, what the assessor is doing. So it may be that we have different issues that they're asking us to address. Maybe it's, it's a hypothetical that addition has been made, and maybe it hasn't been made on January one. There are a, a, a range of scope of services we can do in appraisal. We've done this before here, I, I do mostly commercial work where we discount for differently than the assessor does. So we might look at fifty, sixty lots and discount them in a report differently for a bank than the assessor would. So there are reasons why numbers aren't the same.
All right, very good. One, one last question, I know you go through for me. Cody, you go through a lot of these in a fairly short timeframe. Uh, people submit a lot of information. Are your referees, do they have that information beforehand and an opportunity to review it before they take either the in-person meeting or the phone meeting?
Yes is the easy answer. Um, we go from one to the next every fifteen minutes on a busy day. Generally, it's available, yes. And so if a referee is getting ready for their day tomorrow, for example, they have access to that data. It's always there, a- and it's in the system. And so we have the ability to go and look at it previously. What I tend to do myself is I wait until I listen to the property owner, collect the data both from them verbally, take our own notes, and then we have all of the information that the clerk's office sent. So regardless of whether they turned it in electronically, or it was written, it becomes electronic, so it's all there, the entirety of the time. So as soon as they hit submit, it's in there. So it's available to them, and then we have several forms that are now electronic that we, we create to compile all the data, to look at it. Because a lot of times it is just looking at the listing from the assessor versus theirs. It, and so, yes is the easy answer.
There would be a process after you've spoken with the individuals where you would go back?
Correct.
You would make notes and go back and evaluate?
Yeah. If I have fifteen minutes to listen to a single-family protest, I just collect data during that fifteen minutes. And then we go back later at a different time and work up that packet. And if it takes five minutes, it's five minutes, if it takes an hour and a half, it takes an hour and a half. It takes what it takes at that point, to get through all of the information.
Okay, very good. Anything else for these gentlemen? Uh, thank you both for being here and for answering our questions. Um, are there any members of the public who would like to talk on real property valuation protests for twenty-twenty-five? You've been waiting so patiently, ma'am.
Good morning. Let me hand out a couple of things. Two, three, four, five. I apologize. Um, I also do have an appraisal. I just brought one copy of that because it's big, but if anybody wants to see that.
Okay, and ma'am, we were thinking three minutes, but
Bye.
Five, we'll go with five. You're, you're so persuasive, so we'll do five.
Thank you. Okay. Carla Waldbaum, do I spell?
No.
See, okay. Carla Waldbaum, um, not representing a group or a board or anything, probably just here more as a taxpayer. I am a Realtor, um, so, but not representing any of the real estate companies. First of all, I wanna thank you very much for your questions that you asked this morning of the two gentlemen that spoke before me, very thoughtful questions, and obviously taking your constituents into consideration, the things that they've come to you about, especially the appraisal. I did just actually give you an appraisal that was done in January of this year, and the value was not reduced to that appraisal amount. So I believe, I'm not a lawyer, I can't give legal advice, but I believe that the statutory law is that it needs to be the value of the property on January first of the current year. Anyways, this appraisal was done in January of this year. So we thought for sure this would be significant, or, I'm sorry, sufficient evidence. Um, we did also submit more information, and I can get you that after this meeting. But I wanted to talk about how everyone in this room wants the same thing when it comes to property tax values. The county wants to assess the properties at market value, and property owners want to pay taxes based on the market value. And obviously, the problem is that that number is never the same number. The protest process gives taxpayers the opportunity to provide evidence of why their value should be adjusted, and that is typically in the form of an appraisal. So I just talked about the appraisal that was submitted for twenty-five-hundred South Ninth Street. Uh, you already talked about the frustrations that people have when the value is not reduced to that. But I'd also like to talk about the observations that I had with the twenty-twenty-five tax protest process. I probably helped fifteen to twenty of my friends, clients, coworkers, family members, um, people who just reached out to me and said, this is a healthy increase on my value, and can you help me? So I did, and here's what I found, is that, um, some referees accepted documentation at the in-person hea- hearings, or the meetings, the fifteen-minute meetings, but other referees wouldn't accept it and said, you need to go back and you need to upload that. Which then, for me, I, you know, I'm happy to upload it for my clients so that they don't have to do that, but I don't know that everybody has a scanner and everybody has a computer, and so I don't know how fair that is to say to every person. I noticed some inconsistent protest results, where some appraisals that were submitted, the values were reduced down to what the appraisal amount was, others were not. I brought you evidence of one, and you have evidence from another person. Uh, some builders protested the value of the lots that they owned. So I noticed, oh my gosh, we had lots that were like at nine-thousand dollars, and that's probably too low, that went to eighty or ninety-thousand dollars, and that's more than a healthy jump. But what's even worse about that is that when the builders submitted the information saying, uh, this is what I'm trying to sell these lots for, it's ten or twelve thousand less than what you raised it to, no change is what it, it came back on. I, I looked these all up the other night when they were published online. And so, um, anyway, so that's frustrating for the builders. Um, I did have a builder, I do have information, one of the builders, she was gonna come with today, and she couldn't go come, but I have lots of information about that, how that's inconsistent. I did notice that one builder was able to get his values reduced, but I couldn't figure out what he submitted that would have been any different. So again, it's about the consistency or the inconsistency. HOAs this year, for some reason, we've decided to start tax, or our county is taxing HOAs for the commons area, which is kind of weird because you can't really build anything, maybe a playground, but why, why do those all of a sudden have value? And I don't know why that wasn't publicized to people. And inconsistency where some of the HOAs protested, and theirs was lowered back to zero, and others protested and theirs wasn't changed at all. I just, again, inconsistency.
I wonder if that was a change in legislation. I don't know that for a fact. I just know there was legislation on HOAs that changed this last year.
Okay, and that would be great to know.
And, and I don't, I wasn't following it that closely.
But that does, I mean, that does, it, like you said, if you're not expecting something like that, like the HOAs have to, you know, they have to assess those fees out to people, and so it just makes it easier for everybody if there's some transparency there. Um, I do have a list, a short list of how we can fix this, because I don't wanna just bring you problems, I wanna bring you solutions too. I think that any assessments that increase more than a hundred thousand or more than a certain percent, you mentioned the people who went up, I think it was forty and sixty-seven and percentages like that, I think those should be flagged, and I think those should actually be reviewed by somebody in the assessor's office to see why did these, oh, I am at five minutes.
But how much do you have left, ma'am?
Like, um.
Can you give us the highlights?
Okay, uh, we'd like, uh, da-da-da-da-da. I don't know why Realtors' information that's submitted is not considered a CMA. We, those are not considered anything, but the Nebraska Real Estate License Act says that what we submit is valid. Oh, and then Roger Baumgartler, he had, I can't remember what he said that number was, but he told me he pays almost half a million dollars in, oh, sorry about that. Uh, he pays a lot of money in taxes. And I'm trying to figure out why, if they had already said, hey, you didn't do this, or hey, we don't accept this, why they didn't mention, hey, you didn't sign this? And the other part of that is, why are these forms even allowed to be submitted without the required fields being in there as required? Because I know as I was doing the online protest, if I didn't say, if I was the taxpayer or not, it wouldn't let me go any further. So my suggestion would be, let's make those other fields that are required, truly required, so that you can't go any further. I guess that could summarize it. Do you have any questions for me?
Missures?
I would just add to what Sean said, I'm pretty sure maybe somebody else can confirm, but the HOA land thing was a legislative change, is my understanding.
I have like, yeah, a shadow of a memory of having that conversation in January.
I think they basically said, it's, we can't have this land be worth nothing, it clearly has some value. But I believe that it was a really relatively low value was assigned to them. But it did create, my dad is the president of a big HOA, and he was like, we're all of a sudden getting this big bill, and theirs did get reduced some, but it wasn't zero.
Right, but there were some that went to zero, and that's what I'm talking about, is the, it would be nice if all the referees, and I know this is a big project, and I absolutely respect that, and, and I know that they do a great job, but it'd be nice if we could, if we had consistency across the board for everybody.
Thank you, Carla.
I have a question, Rick, for Brian, I think. Maybe for Brian?
Brian?
Um, Brian, I, my question is to the point of consistency. Um, what is the formula that gets used by the assessor's office for, for coming up with evaluations?
It's gonna depend a little bit, could you be a little bit more specific?
Um, for res- let's just say for residential.
Residential, we are required statutorily to be between ninety-two and a hundred percent of theoretical sales prices. What we're graded on is our valuation areas. So as you break them down into different groupings, each one of those valuation groupings has to be a minimum of ninety-two percent to a maximum of a hundred percent. And so as we get new sales, those groupings will either go up or down accordingly. And then we have to make sure that it's within that range that they give us.
And is there a certain formula that you use to determine those projected sales prices?
It, it's based on models.
Okay.
And the models, um, you might have a certain criteria of X amount of dollars per bathroom, per square footage, figuring depreciation, your land values, all that is, is figured into it. So it's, it's multifaceted on all the different components that are utilized to build a value uh, from the modeling process.
Are those factors like published anywhere or available for the public to, to see that? Because I think there's a lot of questions that I've gotten anyways, kind of pertain to, essentially, well, it doesn't, like, kind of quoting a constituent, there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason to coming up with this price. And, um, so that's kind of what I'm asking, is like, is there a way for the public?
I would beg to differ there, because there's a lot of rhyme or reason. We spend about six months out of the year building models specifically for that.
So the question I have is, is there a way for members of the public who have those types of questions to see kind of what goes?
They could always do a data request, we send out those all the time.
Okay, thank you.
What, what, what would the data requests give them, though?
They've asked for the models, um, how the, the computations are made on everything.
Okay, so I can walk across the hall and ask for a data request on my property? Is when we leave here, okay. I'll do that just to check it all out. You said that the values need to be between ninety-two and a hundred percent?
Correct.
Okay.
For residential and commercial agriculture, it's seventy-five percent.
Thank you.
It's an enormous responsibility, it really is.
Absolutely.
Very good, oh, very good.
And if I could just clarify another, another item on the, um, on the HOAs, we had a little bit of guidance this year, that the state got some phone calls on properties that had no value, that were not exempt properties. So we got a little bit of guidance that they wanted us to put values on all the properties that were not exempt. Most of them got a minimal value, by minimal, I mean a hundred dollars or so. There is a rounding issue with our software, that if you go below fifty dollars, it rounds to zero. That is something we're working on in the test environment to where we're hoping that in this current year, we can get that zeroed around to a hundred dollars for taxation purposes. And that way, we would have every single property that is not exempt will have a, a valuation on the land.
Perfect, thanks for that clarity.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Carla.
I, so does this board have the authority for the appraisal that I submitted, that, what? Do you have the authority to change that before the vote is done this morning for the twenty-twenty-five values?
Before that, Andrew, who gives us?
You, there's no, like, last year, there was somebody who was able to do an amendment, and theirs was changed.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
If this board wanted to reduce this property owner's value from one-seventy-six to one-sixty-three, If this board wanted to reduce this property owner's value from 176 to 163, the appraisal amount, could this board do that today, do an amendment before they vote? Rather than just, because what we're gonna do here today is you're gonna vote and say, "All of these recommendations are being voted on." It's just a flat...
I actually think we already dismissed this. This is a 422. We did the dismissals of the 422s.
This is, this wasn't dismissed. Yeah, yeah, but not all 422s were dismissed, only...
Okay.
Mr. Clerk, have we been at this a while? Are we on item six?
Yes, and for clarity's sake, we're on item six, and every real valuation property protest is a 422. So both five and six are 422 forms.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
So that's, my question is, can...
Up, Andrew.
So are you wanting to give one specific? See, this is the issue we don't give the attorney an exhibit or whatever that you're trying to, are you trying to reference an exhibit or?
The answer is yes, we could do that.
Oh, okay.
We could amend it and say, "I want to approve everything except I want to approve this particular value at this one for this property."
Right.
So yes, we could do that.
I don't...
That would be incredibly hard to do with 3,300.
If they all showed up. Look at how many people showed up.
Yeah.
That's, I guess my question is, everybody just thinks this is a done deal.
We've given you a fair amount of time, so I think we're gonna move on here. Thank you for that last question.
So the overall motion would be to approve the recommendations from the assessor minus the property that you guys would want to give the, the change to?
Different valuation to.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, moving forward, and is there anyone else from the public who wants to talk on final action on real property valuation protests? Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, Commissioners, we've heard a lot of information here. Have an entertaining motion.
We're on item six, right?
Correct. Yes.
I would move approval of item six, final action on real property valuation protest for 2025.
Second.
Motion and second to approve item six. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to item seven, the 2025 cemetery report.
Can I just, real quick, go back to, just to clarify, because I think a lot of folks might be tuning in. If folks do have questions about the data that went into the model for their assessed value, they just have to reach out to the assessor's office and ask for that information? Is that right?
Yes, because we get that information all the time.
Okay.
And if you still disagree with your value, you can appeal to Turk.
Yes.
Go right ahead. It doesn't cost you anything, I don't think, maybe a little filing fee?
There is a filing fee.
A minimal filing fee. You know, my main point is you don't have to hire an attorney to represent you at Turk or something like that.
Good point. Brian, cemetery report.
The cemetery report is, we're statutorily obligated to let you know what's going on with the cemeteries. We've had no transfers of any of the cemeteries within Lancaster County. We did inspections on them. Everything, there's no use changes to anything, and that is Reader's Digest condensed version, that is the cemetery report.
Very good. We need to approve this. Is this an action item, Dave?
I think we should accept.
Okay.
I move to accept the 2025 cemetery report.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the 2025 cemetery report. My grandmother would say, "People are dying to get in there." Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good.
This brings us to item eight, our public hearings. Our first public hearing is on the 2025 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property, new applications, and among that public hearing, they are split into recommendations for approval and recommendations for approval of a partial exemption. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Jacob Van Pelt, Lancaster County Assessor's Office, Register of Deeds.
One question, do I need to open the public hearing?
Yes, Chair, you have to open up the public hearing.
I will now open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Jacob Van Pelt, Lancaster County Assessor's Office, Register of Deeds. We tried to break these up into like items, so they're easier to process as we're going through. In total, between this item and item B, we will have 26 total applications for A, specifically line one, we have 10. The first 10 are being recommended for approval with no penalty. All of these were timely filed and met the statutory guidelines for approval. I can go into additional detail on these first 10, but the owners, for clarity for the people who may be here, are Cedars Housing has two properties, Lincoln Karen Baptist Church, Raymond Community Church, Raymond Community Church, again, second one, two for Center Point Mercy City Church, the Denton Community Historical Society, and Connecting Point Church of the Nazarene.
And those are all recommended for approval?
Correct. All of these are recommended for approval.
On that, on that report, there's not a property identification number for the Mercy City Church one, at least not that I have.
Okay, I can give that to you, that just must have been a clerical issue on, when I created the spreadsheet.
Is it for the address that's listed?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's fine, that's all I'm...
Yep, 6228 Morel. The property ID, just for the record, is 1709113011000.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So if you'd like any additional information on those, be happy to give it, but that's our recommendation, is approval for A, and then line one.
Very good.
Okay, then moving to the second line here, recommended for approval of a partial exemption. This next property is for the meeting place. PID is 1719314013000. On this property, we are recommending, recommending an approval of, for a portion. The property did file timely, however, the full property is not being used for an exempt purpose. The land in the first level are being used for the exempt purposes. The second level is being used for three apartment units, and those are not related to the use of the first floor and the, the land for the parking. For this reason, we are recommending the approval of the land and the first level for exemption, and the second level as being taxable.
Jacob, is that the same as last year, or is this a change?
These are new. This, this property was, was acquired on May the 25th of 2025. So this is entirely new application, and this was the property that the gentleman wanted to...
Sir, this is the property, this is the one we're talking about.
Sir, if you'll raise your hand, we'll swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Can you state your name?
Claire Monian.
Thank you.
I'm chairman of the board of the meeting place.
You don't mind the microphones to one side or the other?
Chairman of the board of the meeting place at 28th and S, where we have a lot of AA and SA and Al-Anon meetings, and we get a lot of people there. And we purchased this property because the Mason's Building next door got, got purchased, and we lost 35 parking spots. They've been letting us use for 30 years, so we purchased the property across the street because it gives us about 16 parking spots in the back. And we're asking for a tax exemption because we're a 501(c)(3) corporation. And I think that you were giving us a tax exemption, but I don't know if it was on the whole building.
Correct. The, the recommendation from the assessor's office was the land for the parking, as well as the entirety of the first level that you told me you're using for the meeting, or for actual meeting space, but then the second level, which is used for the apartments, we are recommending taxable.
There's three apartments in the house, which just accidentally pay the mortgage for the place because we don't have any money. We just get rent from groups of meat there, and that's all. And the apartments upstairs, the apartments, one apartment is upstairs, and the other apartment rents the ground floor and the upstairs. It's a combination first floor, second floor apartment. So the whole second floor is not just two apartments.
We'll have to review that one on the application, it didn't indicate a second.
Yes, and we, and it would be really nice if we could get the whole property taxed exempt because, like I said, we don't have any money.
Yeah.
We're not allowed to do the parts that are the apartments, I think, right? I mean, statutorily, I think our hands are tied on that one. But you're recommending the parking and the first?
Yes, the parking and the space that is not occupied by the apartments. So I, I can visit the property and then calculate the actual square footage so we can have it down to an exact number.
Clarence, I have a question, if you would, sir. So the upstairs area, do you have tenants living in the apartments paying you rent?
They are paying rent, yes.
And there are how many apartments up there?
There's one apartment upstairs that's all by itself on half of the house. And the other half, the apartment is main floor and the upstairs.
And that's part of your meeting space for?
No, no, we don't have any meetings in that building. It's just a, it's just three apartments that are rented. It's a triplex.
Yeah, so there, there are no meeting spaces at all on the first level?
No.
Okay, then the assessor's recommendation would be the parking and the land only, none of the building. We were under the belief that there was meeting space on the first floor.
We just purchased the property so we could park there, and it was already rented out, and two of the apartments are on Housing Authority.
I'm gonna suggest you start having some meetings over there, sir.
Well, the long-term plan is to tear the house down so we've got more parking, and we're in the process of trying to buy more properties around there, because sometimes we have 100, 150 people in three or four different meetings at the same time, so we slug the whole neighborhood with cars.
Yeah, I appreciate your, first of all, thank you for the work you're doing.
Yes.
It's valuable, I have...
If the county attorney can ask a question that's related to legal analysis?
Sure.
I guess I'm not familiar with the Mercy Place, but what's the, what does the Mercy Place?
Meeting Place.
Meeting Place.
Or, or sorry, the Mean Place. Well, what does the Mean Place do exactly?
The Meeting Place?
Yeah.
Exists as a 501(c)(3) corporation to hold 12-step meeting program meetings.
Is it religious-related or, okay?
No, we have special exemptions to have the building for the meetings. We did that years ago because we're not a church and we don't fit all the exemptions.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I would, I would echo what Commissioner Vest was saying, though. The work you guys do for our community is awesome. The people you've served and helped make better improves our community so much, I really appreciate it.
I have family members who have taken advantage.
We have over 4,000 people a week come there for meetings.
Wow, that's great.
I also grew up at 29th and R, and I can attest to the parking issues.
Yeah, and it's getting worse because we're, we had 10 parking spots at the Mason's till the 1st of September, and we're gonna lose those. So it's, the situation's getting worse.
Okay, any other questions for, and I, so I forgot your last name, sir, but Clarence?
Monian.
Any other questions for Clarence?
Just, just for your information, we're in the public hearing now, there's a few other items we have to hear, and then we'll take action on the items after the fact.
Okay, thank you. Do you not need to talk anymore?
No. All right, then. Anyone else wishing to speak on items A1 or 2? All right, I see none.
Next public hearing is the 2025 451 tax exemptions on real personal property, late filings, and they are split into recommendations for approval with penalty and recommendations for denial.
Jacob Van Pelt, Lancaster County Assessor's Office. Of this, the next group here, we have divided them again into two groups, approval with penalty and approval for our recommendation for denial. The first one has 11 properties within it. As, as you may know, the, the deadline for filing of the 451s is December 31st. All of these were received after December 31st. The penalty that we are recommending is based on statutory guideline, and how the penalties work, if an application is received in January, the penalty is the lesser of 10% of the tax or $100. If the application was received in February, the penalty is 20% of the tax or $200, whichever is less, again, going through March incrementally all the way to June. So with these 11 applications, or these, yeah, 11 applications, we are recommending approval, however, we have to have the, the late file penalty as they did not meet the requirements. So of those, I believe that I have on here when it was received and the penalty that needs to be applied for them. So would you like me to read off the 11 applicants?
We have them.
You have them? Okay. So that is the assessor's recommendation on those. Any questions at all?
Are these penalties prescribed by statute?
Correct, yeah. And that's on the, the, there's a chart on the actual application, page two, that, that shows exactly what the penalty would be if it's filed in, in January all the way through June, so.
Very good. Any further questions on that?
All right, and then the last item on here, B, line two, these are the three properties that the assessor's office is recommending for denial. And the, so I will start with the first one, the property that is located at, generally speaking, at 129 West Belmont Avenue with the Islamic Foundation of Lincoln. This is similar to three parcels that we had discussed at the last recommendation hearing. This particular parcel was not filed for at that time. When we realized that this had not been filed, it's part of a, a larger group of properties. When we realized that this one was not included, we contacted the organization, and then they had filed this one after the fact. So this is why this property was not heard with those other ones. So the general area is North First and West Belmont. This particular parcel is an alley between a parking lot that we had recommended approval and an open vacant space that is not used for religious purposes that we had recommended for denial at that point. So this is just a, an unused alley between the two parcels, and then it also has a strip of trees down at the bottom, which again is, is not being used for any exempt purpose at this time.
Just to be clear, they own the alley?
They do, yeah. It, it was how the, the land was originally platted, that looks like at one point there was a street that went through there. That street has since been vacated. And to further complicate things, this now, the, they have combined this alley and the strip of trees into a new larger parcel, so this won't be this way going forward, it's just for this year only going forward. It will now be considered with the larger item. But to the point of the matter, we are recommending denial on this one since it is not being used for parking or, or any religious purpose.
Is it, it's not driveway access to the parking lot?
No, not there, there is separate, completely separate access. Okay, any questions on that one? Okay, move.
Do you want to speak on this, or?
I'm from the Islamic Foundation.
Okay, come on up, then.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, can you please state your name?
Rebin Karim.
Thank you.
And I am a board member at Islamic Foundation of Lincoln. So last year, we purchased those three parcels, a house with two pieces of land next to it. And we, after we purchased it, we are, we were in the process to re-plot everything under one parcel, which happened early this year. The land is, the big piece of land is not used for any religious purposes. It was used last year for a community services by a church, but this year is not used. It was used last year for a community services by a church, but this year is not used. The other part, which is the midway, part of the midway and part of the 145 West Belmont address, the house, is used by the foundation for parking, for parking purposes because on Fridays when we have our ceremony, we make a lot of traffic in the area exactly during school time, so we do use that land for parking purposes.
You're saying you do park in the alley space there?
Yes.
Got it.
The house, we were planning to remodel it, to use it as a ritual bath for our foundation, but in the middle of the process, it was vandalized and still not used for that purpose. But we are in the plan to remodel the house and use it for religious purposes as well.
Right now, the only part you're recommending denial on is the, what was an alley?
Yeah, the, the strip of land. I have photos of it, but the parcel in question is to the west of the house that you're referencing. That used to be a street but was, has since been vacated that we're referring to as the alley.
Do we have a number on that or can I just borrow your pen real quick?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a parcel number?
Yep, I do, but again, the parcel number has now changed, but from the actual, because of the combination, so that's why we'd be happy to give you what the old GIS map looked like as well as an aerial so you can match them up. But the old PID was 1115205005000.
And you're saying it really is overflow parking?
Yes.
During my inspection, the location of this, there was no way to park on that.
Okay.
How do you guys use it for parking?
I'm sorry?
How do you, how do you get a car there to use it for parking?
From the back of the house, so.
Usually, this is-
Give it just one second.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I was just showing him.
Okay, now, now show us.
So this is how it lines up right here. So this is the section we're talking about right here in the middle. And then this back tree line there.
Oh, yeah.
So this, if you recall, this parcel right here, we've approved for the overflow parking. This, there's a divot in the ground there, so there's, you know.
So the trees are here.
Yep.
And inside this parcel, so we are using this part of the land for parking as well.
Yeah, so this section right here.
Plus half of this. And sometimes people park there too, but not usually because it's bothering the neighbors, so we recommend not that they park there, but it happens sometimes, especially on Fridays where there's hundreds of people comes at one-thirty and leave at two.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Thank you for being here, sir.
County attorney has, does have a question for the legal analysis. You did mention that the alley was used for overflow parking for ceremony, correct? Is that ceremony part of religious exercise? I mean, with the Wisconsin Charities Supreme Court decision, you know, the county attorney's office would like further analysis into the assessor's recommendation of denial for that alleyway based on Supreme Court precedent.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go forward to-
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the next one. This was submitted by the Meadow Lane Park Association. On this, we, we reviewed the application and inspected the property. We found at that time that the parcel was not being used as the pool as was listed, which was then not used for the charitable use. We reached out to the Department of Revenue for guidance. On Tuesday, July 8th, they responded back with their recommendation for denial, specifically because the property does not appear to be used for charitable use and would not meet the qualifications for exemption.
Is there anyone here to speak on this property, Meadow Lane Park Association?
Have you talked with the Meadow Lane Park Association? Have they communicated with you?
We have in the past, but like when they submitted the application, we spoke with them at that point.
Are you saying it's not charitable because the pool is not in operation or is the pool gone?
The pool is there, but the pool is not in operation and it was not in operation at the time of application, won't be the remainder of this year and was also not last year.
So the pool, this is like a few blocks from my house and there's some structural issues and they've been trying to fundraise to fix them. So that's why I asked if they were in communication.
They submitted information on their application. We had spoke with them at that point. When I had completed my inspection, the parking lot was being used for storage of building equipment. I don't know if it's always that way, but it was at that point, which I have photos to confirm. But when we consulted with the Department of Revenue, that was their recommendation.
Is that, I mean, if you have nonprofit status, but you have structural issues with the thing that is kind of your purpose and you're trying to fundraise to fix it in order to keep your, your purpose alive, I guess. I don't, I wish someone was here. That's kind of unfortunate that they're not, but.
I was gonna say, fundraising is gonna be a lot tougher.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, it sounds, it sounds to me like they're still doing what they're doing. It's just not, there's not water in the pool right now.
Right.
And there's not water in the pool nine months out of the year anyway, so they've missed a couple of seasons, but they're trying to get back. That seems reasonable to me.
They haven't given up on their purpose. They haven't stopped. They're still fighting to do it.
Yeah. I would be supportive of approving that one.
So.
Not approving the denial, but-
No, 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 yeah.
Denying the denial to make an approval.
I'm with you.
We'll get there. All right. Any other questions on Meadow Lane? Good comments.
There are three denials that you recommend?
Yeah, and then the third one is much easier.
Great Plains.
Yep, on the, the third denial, the Great Plains Annual Conference of the United Methodist Church, this building was purchased by the church on February 25th and they promptly submitted their application at that point. The church then sold the property on June the 10th to a private individual, so the church is no longer using the building. The private individual has not filed for an exemption since purchasing the property. So the church no longer owns it.
Any other questions for Jacob? Stay close, my friend. In case we, as we go forward, we may need your expertise again.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, that brings us to our public hearing on the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications from Vital Services Incorporated, College View Academy, Christ United Methodist Church, Center Point, Christ Lutheran Church, Capital City Christian Church, Emmanuel Retirement Communities III, St. John the Apostle Church, Lincoln Christian School, Trinity United Methodist Church of Lincoln, and Cornerstone Christian Church.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
All right, commissioners, that brings us to item nine, public hearing action items. After a public hearing has been conducted and closed, action, the item that was subject to public hearing will be scheduled as a separate public hearing action item. Because the public hearing has conducted and closed an item, no further testimony or evidence will be accepted or admitted during the public hearing action item portion of the agenda. Nine A was the 2025 451 tax exemption applications on real and personal property, new applications, and they were split into sub-one, action recommendations for approval, and sub-two, action on recommendation of approval of a partial exemption.
I'd, go ahead.
I was gonna do move approval.
I move approval with one clarifying thing. The original recommendation was for the parking and the first floor of the meeting place. I think we should keep the approval to the parking and the first floor because that's what the application indicated. I know there was maybe some different information here, which is fine. We can review that next year, so I move approval, including the parking and the first floor of the meeting place.
Second.
Okay. Very good. So we have a motion and a second to approve items nine A, one, and two as they were presented in their original form. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Nine B, the 2024 451 tax exemptions, excuse me, the 2025 451 tax exemptions on real and personal property, late filings, split into sub-one, action on recommendations for approval with penalty, and sub-two, action on recommendations for denial.
I'd make a motion, actually, let's do this.
Nine B, nine B one first.
Yeah, let's do nine B one. I make a move, a motion to approve nine B one.
Second.
Motion second to approve nine B one. Please call the roll.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
On nine B two, I'd make a motion to approve the Islamic Foundation and the Meadow Lane Park Association and deny the Great Plains one.
Second.
Okay, and I think that motion covers it well. We are moving to approve, motion second to approve the exemption for the, or deny the. Matt, you say it.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the application for Islamic Foundation and Meadow Lane Park Association, but deny the Great Plains Annual Conference.
I'm gonna stay out of that and just say we have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
There you go. We all know what we mean.
My second, I understood what, what he was saying and that's what I'm saying.
As long as the court does in the minutes reflected.
We are moving, we are moving the first-
If I talk less, I think we'll be okay.
We are moving the first two items from denial to approval.
To approval, correct.
There we go. All right, Mr. Clerk.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
I would like to say I really appreciate the assessor's office, though, having clear rules and making recommendations of those denials based on those clear rules. So I do appreciate you guys doing that.
Very good.
Brings us to nine C, the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
I move approval of the motor vehicle applications.
Second.
Motion second to approve item nine C. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 10 is public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items related to county board of equalization business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on items related to the county board of equalization business that were not on the agenda, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning again. I wanted to give an update on the Turk case that it's a, we have a 2024 tax protest that was voted on by, well, it was the same thing as what you did today, where you voted, did a mass, we're gonna approve all of these changes. And the property that I brought you the appraisal for earlier, that property was approved for the value to be lowered. And now the, well, Mr. Nolte is taking your board and the property owner to Turk. I don't know if everybody on the board was aware of that.
Yeah, Commissioner Johnson's name, but everybody else's.
Commissioner Schulte, you remember Schulte? You remember that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm big there remembering it now.
Okay, so we do have an attorney and we are working with, trying to work with the county attorney to try to reach a resolution. But that was another reason that we had the appraisal done in January is because when you have this meeting annually and you say, hey, we're gonna go ahead and approve all of these changes and then the county assessor's office decides they don't agree with their own recommendation and you send out the notices where you say, this concludes our analysis and this is what your final value is, and then you get another notification that said, we're wrong. We're really actually, we didn't mean to lower your tax value. I guess I just wanna make sure that the vote today, that's actually gonna be a real vote and we're not, people who, their taxes were lowered, they're not gonna get another notification saying, we didn't really mean to lower your taxes.
And we're not, we're really not allowed.
Commissioners, keep in mind, public comment is not back and forth.
During public comment.
And this is ongoing litigation to Turk and so.
Thanks, Andrew. This board has taken all the actions that it can statutorily take. Assessor has their own legal authority and their own room to maneuver. I can't speak for the assessor's office.
So I would say as a member of the public that it would be my, my belief that when I receive a letter that says that our, what you did today, the identical, exactly what you did today where you voted and you said, every single one of these, this is what the value is going to be for the year. It's very unusual in my research for the county assessor to come back and say, oops, we lowered yours seventeen thousand dollars and we didn't mean to do that, so we're gonna actually take you to Turk. So now the county assessor's office is using up the county attorney's time, which is a hundred and, she makes a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year. We're using Turk's commissioner's times. They make, I looked up three of the commissioners. They make between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and ninety thousand a year. We hire an attorney, I mean, and the taxpayer. I mean, I'm not the actual homeowner of that property, but it seems like a lot of work for, it's three hundred dollars in revenue is what we're getting for that seventeen thousand in value. And we have an appraisal that was done that shows that the value was not. And I understand, it's not a question and answer. I just wanted to make sure that you as a board know that we are still fighting this. We have tried repeatedly to work out a resolution with the assessor's office and their comment back to me was, we don't need to work it out because we have an attorney on staff. It doesn't cost us anything. And I was speechless because I was like, what do you mean it doesn't cost you anything? It's costing all of us that are paying for the attorneys on staff. So I don't know if that is a representation of their entire office, that they can do whatever they want. This is just a game, but it's disappointing. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Ma'am, thank you for your comments.
Oh, I have one more thing. Last year, we had a special session on legislature and we were, legislature had a special session. There were three things that came out of that. I know that Mr. Vest, Commissioner Vest, tried to explain to me what that seven percent cap was, what's not a real seven percent cap. I kept my notes. Anytime anybody wants to try to explain that to the public, I know it had to do with, it couldn't be more than this, it couldn't be that. Is that what's gonna happen at the end? Like, we're gonna back into that number and then they're gonna say, okay, your overall taxes didn't go over seven percent? I guess. If anybody understands how that works, let me know. Carla Wallbum.
Follow up with your answer.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move on.
Item 11 is adjournment.
Who's the adjourn?
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.